Good afternoon. I'm Commissioner Matt Hale and today is July 13th, 2015. This is a special meeting of the Glendale Water and Power Commission. So Madam Clerk, if we could jump right into the roll call.
Sure. Before I proceed, President Chan will be out today. With that, Commissioners Sarajini-Law, Manuel Camargo.
Here.
And Matthew Hale.
Here.
Okay. Item 2A is Consent Items, Approval of the May 4th, 2015 Minutes.
Commissioners, I don't have any amendments to the minutes from our last meeting, so without objection, I'd like to approve those on consent.
Can I ask a quick question? I was just wondering, are public comments usually recorded as part of the minutes?
They're typically alluded to in the minutes, and we did take one speaker card on item 4 during our last meeting.
Okay.
But depending on the nature of the comments, they may or may not be written up, and depending on whether there was any discussion or back and forth with Commissioners.
Got it.
Three is GWP Commission Staff Comments.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to actually defer that item to the end of today's meeting to recognize our new Commissioner and give her a few minutes to introduce herself to members of the public.
Four, Reports. A, Water Conservation Update. Michael DeGhetto.
President Pro Tem Hale and Members of the Commission, my first report today is a water conservation update. And I've given this report to the Commission a few times, and today's more of an update. But I do start with some of the same things that we go over each time. And when I prepared this report, there had been some precipitation, and it helped everyone's yards. You know, now we've got warmer weather, so kind of the first thing to think about is reducing irrigation, and then maybe think about permanent irrigation changes at your home. Right now, we're in Phase 3 Water Conservation, which is two days a week watering, Tuesday and Saturday, for no more than 10 minutes at each station. You need to defer landscaping projects unless you're using California-friendly landscaping. And then, of course, all of our water waste policy guidelines are still in effect during all the phases. And just to go over again what the issue is, so our water here in the region comes basically from Northern California and the Sierras, through the Bay Delta, through the State Water Project, also through the Colorado River Aqueduct to the Metropolitan Water District. And the reason that we're having this issue, here's the snowpack in the Sierras in January of 2013. Here it is in January 2014, so pretty significant drop. And then in January 2015, which is still not up to normal levels. So the City of Glendale is a member agency of the Metropolitan Water District, and Metropolitan provides water to about 19 million residents in the area. And using Metropolitan's storage is one of the ways that we're helping to meet demands And about half of Met's storage is being used to get through this year, conserving another half to get through next year if there's similar issues, and then still keeping some of the storage in reserve in case of an emergency. And one example of investments that Metropolitan's made is Diamond Valley Lake, which was completed in 1999 at a cost of around $2 billion. And that's a photo of kind of the current level in the lake. So 70% of Glendale's water comes from Metropolitan, it's imported water, and about 30% comes from groundwater, and which, the amount that we can take is limited by the judgment in the basin. In the San Fernando Basin, the extractions that Glendale can take is between 4,000 and 5,000 acre-feet per year. And then in the Verdugo Basin, we can take up to 3,800 acre-feet. And then, of course, we have our recycled water system, and we're using about 2,000 acre-feet a year now in recycled water. One of the questions I get at some of the public meetings when I go over the drought is, you know, what are we doing to conserve water, stormwater, locally? And so the LA County Flood Control District is basically oversees that in our area. In the San Fernando Basin, as of April, about 2,700 acre-feet was captured and basically stored to percolate back into the groundwater. In San Gabriel Basin, 39,000 acre-feet has been conserved. And then in their coastal spreading grounds, about 61,000 acre-feet. And there's currently projects being discussed and planned to increase capture and storage in the San Fernando Basin. And to give an update on where we're at, this graph, I'm trying to emulate what's on the state's website, and if you look at May, so for the month of May, we're down about 23% compared to what we were in 2013. So that's how the state is basing our conservation. But they're usually, they're going to use a rolling 12 months, so the rolling 12 months in May was 8.4% over that same period of 2013. So the 20% cutback that Glendale has to make is basically where the 8.4% is on that graph. So, and that's why having higher conservation in the summer, because there's typically more water use in the summer, is how we'll catch up and get to that 20% overall for the 13 months, for the 12-month period. Hopefully that makes sense. This is one thing that's, you know, there's a lot of percentages everyone talks about, but this is how the state's going to start kind of reporting and showing compliance.
So what are the implications for Glendale Water and Power as a utility if we don't meet our 20% goal? And what are the implications then for the ratepayers?
Yeah, so the worst-case scenario would be is if we don't meet the goal, and it could be up to like a $10,000 a day fine. In the near term, all the water suppliers have to report monthly to the state, and if it looks like we're not going to meet it, they could actually direct us to take some other actions, which in our case might be going to another phase to limit outdoor watering more would be one of the tools that we have in place. There might be more emphasis on enforcement, issuing citations and things like that.
So is that $10,000 per day until we reach our 20% target? Or is that kind of nebulous and unclear for?
It's kind of nebulous and unclear. I think it would be more if we didn't respond, if the state came to us and said, hey, it looks like you're not going to meet it, and then we weren't meeting it, then they would start, I think, talking about those fines. And just one thing I show on the graph too at the bottom is when we started Phase 2 last year, and then we started Phase 3 kind of this year. I've just got little arrows kind of showing that.
Do you have a question for you? Do you have a way of projecting how the rest of the 12-month period might map out?
That's a good question. I think, based on what we're looking at now, because we have daily data, because we have our AMI system, the trend looks like we're going to meet our targets, and that's, we're just really basing that on how consumption's comparing to 2013 and how people are responding in their usage. And right now, the data looks, it looks promising, and it looks good, and it looks like we're going to pencil out, but we actually look at that every day, and if things don't look like it's going to work out, that's when we might talk about more enforcement and more restrictions in other phases.
And then I suppose that's sort of a, that timeframe's not knowable, I would assume. That is, the point at which we'll need to trigger some more additional actions is going to be based on what the trending looks like.
Yeah, basically, yeah, exactly. And based on our daily information, the trend looks good. Looks like we should meet our targets. But it's really important that everyone sticks to those watering days and the watering durations.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
This is my first commission meeting, so I hope you'll excuse me if I'm not quite up to speed on these graphs, but is the, can you explain to me, what does the blue line represent? You've probably already said this, and I apologize for asking. I just want to make sure I understand what I'm looking at. What does the blue line represent?
So the blue line is the monthly savings compared to 2013, in the same month in 2013.
Okay.
And then the red line is the cumulative savings over a 13-month period, as compared to that same 13-month period in 2013.
So it's from 12 months previous to that?
Yes.
All right, I just want to make sure I understood.
So it's savings over the previous fiscal year, really?
Pretty close to fiscal year.
Yeah, and then the red line is what our cumulative goal, how short we are of our cumulative goal from the state. So that 8.4% that's on the May line should be 20 by the end of the calendar year, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's a pretty big gap.
It is, but again, it goes to the amount of water that's used in the summer months.
Right.
Is really where you make up for it, in that cumulative part.
Right.
And as you notice at the bottom of the chart there, it says we started Phase 3 just before May, so we're starting to reap the dividends of that.
Exactly.
Phase 3 of the water conservation. So in theory, Phase 3 should accelerate our rate of savings, and we should be able to make it by the end of the year, in theory. But come October or so, and we're not seeing the pace of savings go up, then we'll probably need to start to take more drastic measures.
Yeah, and even before that, like I said, you know, we actually look at this every day.
Right. So in a month's time, when we meet again, we should see movement?
Yeah, in a month's time too, we'll have another, now, of course, it'll, let's see, in a month's time, we'll probably have the June.
Right, we'll have the June numbers. Okay, excellent.
So, Michael, I wanted to delve into January a little bit, because it looks like we actually have negative savings that month.
That's correct.
Do we have any idea what we can attribute that to, or is that?
You know, it's directly attributable to what we talked, what I was saying about the low, the high water usage in the summer, there's typically lower water usage in the winter months, and January was hot. So you get, you don't, let's see, if you use a little more water in the winter, it really flips that graph on the savings.
Slide down the hill, right, okay.
So we've done more outreach, you know, we had direct mail on our Phase 3 conservation, got ads on the B-line buses, we've done homeowners association presentations, several of those, had some op-ed, some articles, things like that, on local papers. So one of the things that we report to the state is our enforcement activities. So again, this is the May information, and we talk about how many people have gotten the first warning, second warning, third warning, letters about leaks. So we use our AMI system to tell if people have leaks at their house, and we'll send them a letter and say, hey, you know, it looks like you have a leak, you want to look into fixing that. Made calls to customers, we've done some field visits, and we have some summer staff now helping do some of the analysis, sort of the back office stuff related to this. So again, in May, the State Water Board adopted the final regulations. They started doing curtailment of water rights in tributaries to the State Water Project and to other watersheds up near Sacramento and in those areas. And they constructed a saltwater barrier in the delta. Basically, because of the lower flows going into the delta, the saltwater would tend to go back further into the delta. So they have a temporary barrier that they installed. So there's just a lot of activity, and I prepared this presentation, maybe this is my second version, I prepared it for the, kind of the first meeting, and then we didn't have it, and then we kind of changed it. And literally as of last week, MWD stopped taking basically new applications for the turf removal program. They had budgeted a total, the total amount they've budgeted for water conservation is $450 million. $350 was for turf, and with the goal of locking in permanent changes in water use by transforming the landscaping in the area to be more like our Mediterranean climate. And it's already all used up and reserved, so $350 million, it's like the biggest program ever for this. And it's on track to do 150 million square feet of turf, or basically three times what the governor had announced when he first announced his drought measures.
Are there any indications from MWD that they're going to be re-upping the program or doing some kind of a budget augmentation to continue the?
They're going to bring it up at their board again and discuss it, because it's a very popular program.
Yep.
But it's also a very large expenditure, $350 million's quite a bit, so. So what we've done, and this is a little more, I'm going into more of an update since the last time I gave the presentation, so, you know, GWP got a rebate from, MWD approved for the Grand View pump station, and, you know, this would be an example of, I don't know if you can tell, that we made much of a change, you know, we actually took out, where you can see the gravel, there was grass there, so, and there was already plants and planters and things like that, so there really wasn't a lot to do on that site. This site, our Jim Rez Pump Station, is also where one of our largest MWD connections is, and MWD was doing some work there. And usually, you know, we do this as well, if we do some work that disurbs someone's yard, you know, you go back and kind of replace some of the landscaping, and so we went ahead and they replaced this with some drought-tolerant landscaping at the site, instead of putting turf back, because they had turf there. We took out some turf here at this pump station, and again, it's kind of, I was really surprised that there was grass there after we took it out and put the gravel. It's like, you know, there's a hedge and all those things, it's like, was it really kind of necessary to have that? Now, this site, I had some notes on this one. You know, we're currently, we're currently doing some more work here, and this is near, it's kind of between Western Avenue and Raymond Avenue. And our data is, you know, we used 1.5 to 2 million gallons a year on irrigation at this site. So one of the first things that we did was turn off all the irrigation, we've gone back, capped the nozzles so we can still irrigate the trees and the shrubs, and staff right now is actually doing some work, we're going to apply mulch to most of the area, and then I think after that, we might go back and put some more native plants or things like that, and maybe as part of some other site improvements, if we work on the fence and some of those things. And so I counted, this is a very big site, I just looked at the map, there's about, it's about 29 front yards, so there's about, say, across the street, if you go around each side of the plant, it's about 29 houses kind of surround that. So, yeah, that's a lot of water. And I know, I know folks ask us about conservation and why the limitation on irrigation and things like that, and I say, you know, that's where most of the water goes, you know, and here's a perfect example of one of our sites, where we used a lot of water just on irrigation.
Can I ask a quick question about that? And I should say that I've got some skin in the game, because that's my neighborhood. I live with, I've lived within walking distance of that site for over 15 years, so. And I was very curious as to why the grass had gone so brown, and I'm thrilled to hear about the conservation of all that water, that's wonderful news. And I was just wondering about, when you do, when you've, when an area like that has been heavily irrigated for a number of years, and there are, you know, I don't think anyone's going to shed tears over the brown grass, but what is the effect on trees? Because what would concern me with the halt in irrigation is if the trees have become very dependent on that heavy irrigation, are we risking losing mature trees?
Well, in this case, what we did is, our crews went out and they actually capped the nozzles that sprayed on the turf, and then left the nozzles that sprayed on the trees.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we don't lose the trees.
Okay, great.
You know, here's another site, which is more like a typical front yard, so we're gonna, we're actually going to do some planning and put some plants in there and kind of work on this one to see how it can look nice, basically, and try some different plants and things like that, different California native plants. Some other updates, so the City Council had a discussion about modifying the landscaping ordinance to allow artificial turf in the front of properties, and what they requested is that staff does more research on that, and basically hire a consultant to take a look at it. And then kind of simultaneously, Assemblyman Mike Gatto has a bill that would actually prohibit local governments from banning artificial turf. Some of the amendments and things like that that I saw to the bill relate to allowing the local governments then maybe to set standards on the type of artificial turf, as opposed to just preventing local governments from having any prohibitions or any authority over it.
Michael, speaking of that, on your first point there, further research requested, can you talk further about the type of research, talking about savings, is it more to the point of maybe setting standards?
It's more, I think it's more related to setting the standards and to look at, I think some of the questions that were raised were permeability and quality, I guess, different types of quality, and then how that would relate to a modification of the landscaping ordinance.
Thanks. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm a water waster, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Add that to my bill.
Oh, you know, and I didn't update this slide, but it's not now open anymore, I guess it would be kind of used up. I think you can still go in when they reopen the site and maybe make, you know, put your application in and get on a list, but, and then, of course, you know, any time you do work in your front yard, you've got to follow our zoning ordinances, and the Planning Division can answer questions about that. And then we, you know, on our website, and I always direct folks to our website, we've got the Waterwise Gardening, examples of the kind of plants and things like that you can use. And then we've got our other rebate programs. So one thing, the MWD program, as it relates to like efficient utilities for indoor use and things like that, that's still in place, it was just the turf rebate is pretty much all reserved at this point. And, kind of the end of our presentation, I don't know if you have any other questions?
What kind of, I'm sorry, did something? What kind of enforcement, what kind of issues have resulted in these enforcement activities? So you said you had over 300 warnings, what were the warnings about? Is it all about residential watering? Is it all lawn watering or landscape?
I would say almost all of it is for the watering, because a lot of that is from residents sort of texting in or, how do I say it, that they see someone violating the ordinance, so a lot of those responses are driven by that.
So it's neighbors or passersby noticing unusually high amounts of, or non-compliant?
Or maybe watering on the wrong days, or watering in the wrong hours, or having irrigation run off into the street, or run onto the sidewalks, things like that.
Okay. And what, through what method are they reporting these incidents?
Oh, a lot, they can call, we have a, I think it's a 1-800 number that they can call, they can use the My Glendale app, they can report it basically online like that. And we've gotten some letters, too.
I have an add-on follow-up to that regarding the enforcement component, and that is, can you talk about what then triggers a second warning in the instance that we've had second warnings, that is, is it a follow-up complaint from a local resident, or is it the city doing follow-up or something else?
Both, a combination, and also like looking at the usage patterns in the information from the AMI, to kind of see if we had sent a notice and then to kind of see if that pattern still happens.
And has the response been positive from the people who've received the letters? Have they adjusted their behavior accordingly, or?
Yeah, for the most part it is, because folks might not even know.
Right.
You know, not everyone is, I guess, maybe very handy with their irrigation controllers, so maybe getting a notice, and someone might say, oh, I didn't even know that it was, I was watering on the wrong day or at the wrong times.
Yeah, we.
Most case it helps.
I'm very sympathetic to that, because we had a, we had to cut the power to our house to repair something, and it reset all of our sprinklers, and then they were going off at like 9 o'clock on Wednesday. It's like, how did this, oh, the power, you know, so it can be entirely unintentional as well.
Definitely, and I know, just like any clock, or, some of them have a little battery backup, but if you never think about changing that battery, then the battery's dead too, and the power goes off and it resets, yeah.
One more question regarding the San Fernando Basin, can you, how would you characterize the health of that particular basin?
The health is good, I mean, other than, and I might touch on this a little bit in my next presentation, but other than some of the groundwater contamination, things like that, where we have cleanup related to that, but the health is, I mean, it's a managed basin.
And the levels, from a levels perspective?
The levels are down, and the levels kind of have been going down because of kind of a lack of local precipitation as well.
Okay, thank you.
One last point I'll make is, I was reading an article that Fresno's Water Agency actually sent out two versions of their conservation mailer, one was kind of cartoony and friendly and had a nice, hey, it's great to conserve message, and the other was a stark, black-and-white, bureaucratic, thou shalt conserve kind of mailer, and the black-and-white bureaucratic one had far better results. So I wonder if there's been any kind of experimentation on, at the GWP level, as far as the nature and type of message that's being sent out to ratepayers to try to urge them to conserve?
Yeah, there has been, and I think, like you mentioned, we've definitely been more of the kind of friendly approach and things like that, and do your part and all that kind of stuff, and we've looked at even some advertising that's a little more direct and to the point. I don't think we've done that advertising yet, but it might come depending on how the response is to conservation.
We're in a different position as a water agency as well than Fresno probably is being out there in the central valley.
I think so.
So it may not be time for that, but, you know, we might want to get a little bit more stark in our communications with the public and with our ratepayers, depending on how well we're doing at getting to that 20% threshold.
Yeah.
And then facing those fines, whatever they are from the state, depending on.
Yeah, and we've been looking at that and actually have some artwork and things that are a little more, they still look very professional and great.
Sure.
But, but they're just a little more direct.
Are you rewarding your customers who have very brown lawns?
We've actually talked about that, about maybe having a sign that's similar to the one about it's, it's not pretty but necessary, but, you know, maybe something to the effect it is pretty, thank you, or something that you can stick in your lawn.
Yeah.
We've talked about that.
So people can take pride in it, because they can't take pride in their green lawn?
Maybe something that says, I saved X thousand gallons of water, or something.
You're welcome.
Something to that effect.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any other questions on this side?
Thank you very much. I really look forward to hearing your next update, this is very interesting. Thank you.
Before B is Water Consumer Confidence Report, Michael DeGhetto.
So the next report I'm going to talk about is an annual report that all water agencies have to give, and it's called the Consumer Confidence Report, and it's basically about water quality. And I think everyone should have a handout, like a printout, of that, and this is currently up on our webpage, so anyone can go online and download it and read it and enlarge it so you can read it more easily. And what I'm going to talk about a little bit is, is really what it's about. I'm going to talk a little bit about aesthetics, the Safe Drinking Water Act, Consumer Confidence Report itself, water quality standards, go into a little bit on disinfection, some things on groundwater treatment, and then just some concluding remarks. So basically from prehistory up till the 19th. So basically, from prehistory up till the 19th century, if it looked, smelled, and tasted okay, and there wasn't any immediate effect, people used it. And those were the main criteria for water quality, until, you know, a connection was made that small living organisms exist and can cause health problems. So now those aesthetic things are second, what we would call secondary standards, and the primary standards are related to health effects. So from the 1970s to present, kinda started, a lot of the current regulations started with the Cuyahoga River Fire in 1969. And I've, you know, I've got a picture in the presentation of basically water on fire there, which helped prompt the Clean Water Act in 1972, and then after that, the Safe Drinking Water Act in 1974, which gave oversight, basically through the EPA, to delegate that down to State Water Board, and then the Division of Drinking Water. And basically, in California, we've got the Title 22 regulations we talk about, which cover this. And it talks about monitoring, testing, reporting, as well as the Consumer Confidence Report. So it's an annual public report on the constituents in water. It lists constituents in the source water and water after it's been treated. And of course, Glendale's water meets or exceeds all state and federal drinking water standards. And you can go on our webpage to look at our 2015 CCR, which, you know, if you read it, it's the 2015 CCR, but it's a detailed report on the water we delivered in 2014, right? It comes out, you know, the year after we do the reporting and testing. So water quality standards, kinda based on a couple of things. There's the safety is the main focus, and you've got the acute or short term, which would be viruses, pathogenic bacteria, like typhoid fever. You've got protozoas, which are little, once old organisms. And then you've got the other safety things, which would be chronic or long-term, which might be irritation, some carcinogens, and really a lot of the longer-term things, the focus of a lot of the new work, especially as testing can get down to smaller and smaller concentrations, and there's more data and analysis on those type of things, the carcinogens, for the most part. So, you know, the main thing is the disinfection, which is the destruction or deactivation of pathogenic organisms. And it's not sterilization, it doesn't kill everything that's in the water, it just destroys or deactivates the pathogens. There's a couple of methods. There's free chlorine, which has a residual chlorine in the water, and there's chloramines, which what you call a total residual of chloramines, which is a combination of chlorine and ammonia. And a disinfectant residual is kept in the distribution system to deactivate any pathogenic organisms that might enter the system before it reaches the tap. So if, for some reason, there was a leak, say, into the pipe, that residual in there would help deactivate any organisms that might get in. And typically, the other thing is, we always maintain a pressure in the pipes to prevent that from happening as well. So disinfection was like a very important development for drinking water that really allows large urban areas even to exist and prevent the spread of those diseases. So after that, now there's a lot of work on the disinfection byproducts. So putting those disinfectants in there can also create byproducts in the water. And so one of the things that is kinda common that we have to monitor is the total trihalomethanes, which is a byproduct of chlorine and organics that are in the water. Then, kinda the treatment that we have here, besides disinfection, would be treatment of groundwater. And that could be chemical removal through adsorption using granular activated carbon for industrial and dry cleaning solvents like TCE and PCE. And we have ion exchange, which is a method for removing metal ions, like the hexavalent chromium or chrome six. And then also, there's blending of the water, which is like another barrier before it would reach the distribution system. So, in my concluding remarks, then, it's, you know, the city's water meets all state and federal drinking water standards. You know, our water quality team, operators, engineers, work diligently to keep the city's water supply safe and reliable. And of course, we've been on the cutting edge of new treatment technologies, like the chrome six research that we've been doing for decades. And I think, in the Consumer Confidence Report, it lists the detected contaminants in the sources, and it's broken down by, you know, the different areas, like the lead and copper rule, testing for the bacteria, and the total trihalomethanes. It talks about other constituents that aren't currently regulated. And then it kinda goes into those organic chemicals, inorganics, and items like that. And I think the important thing to remember is, you know, if we have a detection in our source water, we have treatment to remove it before it gets served, if it goes above the contaminant levels. But, you know, the Safe Drinking Water Act, part of that was to be able to provide the public, you know, the consumers, with the information about everything related to the water quality. And I think, and I still like putting that slide at the end of all my water talks, so...
Questions?
Any questions?
Questions? I just have one, which is kinda a long-range question on our treatment facility for the hexavalent chromium up in the northern part of the city. What's the long-range sort of prognosis for that treatment plant? I mean, eventually, I think we wanna get to a point where the, we've eliminated the contamination plume, and then it's just a groundwater basin, but how many years away from that are we, are we really?
Yeah, that's always a hard question, you know? I think initially, that treatment plant, the thought was, oh, five years, and then it'll be a five-year study, and I think it's been closer to 15 now. You know, then you look at the models and the sampling in the basin, and then you might say, oh, 15 years, let's say. But it's always, just my experience has been, it usually ends up taking longer than that than what was expected. And we're actually in the process of completing the two studies that were done on the two treatment methodologies. We've selected one treatment method, which is the ion exchange, and we're building kind of a bigger enhanced permanent, as opposed to a temporary plant, at one of our facilities near our utility operations center, to kinda then sort of permanently treat it.
So, when do those studies, when will they be complete? And are those something that we can actually bring before the commission to sort of compare the two technologies and get a little bit more information about those?
You know, we could print those out and bring them. They're gonna be, initially, they're gonna be posted on the website, because part of the grant funding and all that is to make them public studies. You know, it's because there's grant funding, so these studies are for everyone's use. But that's something that we could bring. We could print them out and make binders and bring them and go over it.
What's the time horizon on that? Is it end of the summer and end of the year? Or are they completed already?
In the summer. They're, how do I say this? One of them's called a supplemental report, and it's being reviewed kinda by the advisory committee.
Got it.
So, I mean, I've seen kinda the final version of that, but there might be some other updates and things like that. And then, once that's completed, it'll be published and posted, and we could make hard copies and bring those, for sure.
Next item?
Oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes or three minutes. Commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The general manager may refer to the matter to appropriate staff for investigation and report.
I have no cards at the moment. If there's any member of the public that wishes to speak, now is your opportunity. Why don't you go ahead and come up to the microphone? But before you leave, fill out a card so that we have a record of your comments.
Hi, my name is Trevor Carem. I'm a student at USC. I had two questions that I wanted to ask. The first is regarding the rate increase that local media reported this past month. I believe it was a 75 cent increase. And the opinion that was expressed in the newspaper that I read, which mirrors my own, is if residents are saving more, generally speaking, I believe the newspaper reported a figure in the neighborhood of 30% in general, that may be wrong, but that's what I read, then why are they being charged more? Why did that GWP have to come to that decision as opposed to other possible solutions? And perhaps I should stop there, but for records purposes, my second anecdote is, I was speaking with a coworker, and they mentioned that their neighbor, who rents property, is not the owner of the property, waters for over an hour on every other day. And they claimed that it's therapeutic to them, that it would be a danger to their health to stop, something along those lines. And she wanted to pose the question of, if people are doing stuff like this, why aren't there citations and, you know, targeting of these individuals? Rather than an overall rate increase for everybody, why not find the people who are the troublemakers who aren't complying and fine them more than a general rate increase?
So, Mr. DiGhetto, I'll let you address those comments as you see fit. Under the Brown Act, we can't really comment on items that are not before the commission and items that are sort of off the agenda. Your question about the conservation is somewhat related to item four, so I'll let Mr. DiGhetto address that issue.
Is it the item related to the 75 cent charge, or the item related to...
More about the conservation. The rates and the rate structure is not rightly before the commission, so I will...
President Hill, you are absolutely correct. There are the archives of the meetings that the public can go and watch. Those were addressed, I believe, during the last commission meeting or the one prior, where we discussed the conservation rate, its implementation, why it's needed. There's a full report on that, and it's in the archives, which are in the city's website. With regards to the conservation-related question, again, you're correct. Under the Brown Act, we can address it, but we can't have a full-blown discussion. We could bring it back if the commission so pleases.
We'll address that once we get to the agenda forecast to decide whether we wanna take these items up as an ancillary matter later, where we can have a more complete discussion. But under the Brown Act, we would be violating the law if we actually got into a big debate about the subjects that you're raising. So I just, that's, I'm not trying to be evasive, I just wanna explain, you know, what our boundaries are.
Okay, so to address the question about a neighbor, I think one of your friends has a neighbor that waters, seems like an hour a day. The best thing to do would be to report that, either using our app, our MyGlendale app, or to call customer service. And then we could send a notice or even have someone go out and speak to that person. And then is, is that really is? Then just the other thing about the rates and the 75 cents. Those rates are in place related to collecting our, basically fixed requirement for running the water system, and they're already approved in our rate structure. Because a large percentage of the rates that we collect are related on our, what we would call volume-related, and so that actually helps make up a loss of revenue.
And it's addressed?
It is addressed in the archives. Earlier meetings, more extensively.
There's a report on it.
Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I think all that item closed.
And six is agenda forecast.
So commissioners, it looks like we've got a pretty heavy agenda on August 3rd. Do we want to entertain the notion of moving some of those items to a later meeting, or should we hunker down and plan for a late night?
It looks like the agenda for September right now is blank, so...
Are we dark in September? Is that what it is?
Is there a reason why everything is in August? Are any of these agenda items related or interdependent in some way?
So, if I had to guess, I would suspect that this is a recommendation based on the fact that we canceled our previous meeting, so we're dealing with the backlog of that meeting, so...
President Hill, Commissioner Law, there is the Labor Day holiday in September. I don't know if September 7th happens to be Labor Day, the actual day, but we normally, sometimes we go out and schedule a special meeting. That's what we normally do. Also, if I may make a recommendation for the commission's consideration, by the next meeting, we will hopefully have our other new commissioners. So if the commission so pleases, we could also put the election of a new president on the agenda for either August or September.
That's fair. So why don't we go ahead and add that to our August meeting, since we're gonna have all of our commissioners on board at that point? Unless anyone has any objection to that?
No objection.
So I'd suggest...
Can I, can I suggest, there's an additional topic, an additional topic I'd like to consider. So actually, Michael, for you, the city's done quite a bit with respect to conservation, and then I, we know that in August, we'll be hearing about a capital improvement project update on the water and the electric side. So I guess that's all sort of, you know, I'd like to try to understand, are there other larger initiatives that we should be, that the city is considering, or that this commission should be considering? I guess in my mind, I think of sort of the repowering of the Grayson Power Plant, and perhaps on the water side, is there something equivalent to that? Is it around recycling? We've talked a little bit about recycling in the past. You know, there would have to be, I would suspect, you know, regulatory and/or legislative change in order to do, you know, what's locally referred to as toilet-to-tap, but those types of sort of, you know, major projects. I guess what strikes me is, you know, we're working to get through this particular drought. You know, is it our thinking, as long as we maintain what we have and we get through this drought, is this sort of an aberration? Or should we be taking more significant steps in order to plan for a future with less water and more usage? So, thoughts on that?
My thoughts on that is, I think it is a good one to bring up during our capital improvement program update, because we actually have been thinking about shifting some priorities related to pipelines that we put in, maybe to extend the recycled system and defer some other main replacement projects. Because I think we've really been trying to go towards large users, large irrigation users, like schools and things like that. And we have one project that we did move into next year's capital budget that'll address one of those, so that may be a good time to hit on that.
Okay. Yeah, I'd appreciate that, if the other commissioners would be supportive.
Without objection.
Could we move the risk management policy update and the renewables portfolio standard update? Maybe some, I don't, I can't imagine that these are very long items.
Actually, I was gonna suggest that we move electrical storage risk management and the RPS update.
Yeah, all three.
Yeah, and keep our quarterly updates, so that we can actually start bringing our new commissioners up to speed on some of the regular business items, and we can sort of schedule the extraordinary items for a later meeting, where we can dig a little bit deeper and spend a little bit more time going into those.
Yeah, because we don't wanna get out of sync with our quarterly updates.
One other suggestion would be to ensure that we continue the water conservation updates until we know how we're going to end the fiscal year. So I see that we have those updates in August and in October, but I would think that we should do that on a monthly basis until we know we're going to be clear of the 20% threshold.
Any other recommendations?
No, none for me.
Seven, adjournment?
Actually, we defer... Actually, we deferred item number three until the end here, so I'd like to go back to item number three.
GWP Commission staff comments?
Any comments from the GWP side? Seeing none, I will go ahead and defer to our new commissioner, Commissioner Lal, to introduce herself.
Well, thank you. First, I really want to thank Councilmember Paula Devine for asking me to serve in this position. I'm really thrilled to be here. My first impression of GWP came when I was a new resident here in Glendale over 15 years ago, and GWP was the very first agency, it was the very first contact I had with the city. And I think for a lot of people moving here, it is indeed, sort of, GWP is like the welcome mat for the city when you move in. And from that time, and right up till today, and I know into the future, I've just been incredibly impressed with the professionalism of GWP staff. There was an issue on my street about six weeks ago. They had to flush out the sewer pipes, and it was fairly fragrant and a bit messy. And I went out and spoke to the people who were sitting in the vans and operating the material, the machinery, to do the work. And they were so concerned about, you know, how it was affecting me in my home. I was concerned about, you know, where the smells were coming from, and they were incredibly helpful and came into my house, made sure everything was okay, wouldn't leave until they were sure everything was operating correctly. And that has been kind of, from beginning to end, my experience with the department, so thank you very much for that. These are really challenging times in terms of the drought. This is a very interesting time to be participating in this commission. And I think that I want to raise something that I heard on one of our public radio stations a few months ago. There was a woman who was talking very knowledgeably about how people in Australia had dealt with the catastrophic drought that they had there, that I think persisted for over 10 years. And she said, don't waste a good drought. A drought is an opportunity. Now, I think those are kind of hard words to hear right now, because we're really in the midst of it, we're kind of in the trenches of it. But her words have really stuck with me. Don't waste a good drought. This is a time to take very thoughtful consideration of policies that have both short-term and long-term goals. So I'm really excited to be here and hope to be very helpful as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and we're looking forward to your insights and your professionalism and your, you know, experience as a ratepayer and as a policymaker here in the city to help GWP a better utility.
Thanks.
Any other comments?
Seven adjournment.
We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
Without objection, we are adjourned.
Thank you.